Good evening and welcome to the Village of Toccoho Planning Board meeting. The agenda for this evening includes approval of minutes for the meeting held on December 19th, 2017, approval of minutes meeting held on February 21st, 2018, and 187 White Plains Road, site plan to construct a new athletic field, 11 Jackson Avenue to install a garage door to create an office space. Okay? The work session was held on March 6th, and I just remind everyone that at that meeting we had very, a very large crowd of people who did comment, and we are going to open the meeting tonight with comments being available, not being appropriate. And I have a list of the people who spoke the last time so that I, because I promised them that we would not repeat them again until we had everyone who wasn't here before getting their chance. Okay? All righty. Could we first have the attendance taken, please?
Commissioner Narenberg.
President.
Commissioner Barra.
Present.
Commissioner Caliano.
Here.
Chairwoman Caramella.
Present. Okay? And now we have our first item, which is the approval of the minutes for the meeting on December 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Pardon?
Discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then we go on to the approval of minutes for the meeting held on February 21st, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And we go on to the next, which is 187 White Plains Road, site plan to construct a new athletic field.
Madam Chair, I think you're going to take 11 Jackson.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Jackson Avenue first. 11 Jackson Avenue for the installation of garage door to create an office space. Excuse me.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Lucenti, owner of 11 Jackson Avenue. I'm here tonight to review the site plan that we originally submitted. Since the last meeting and work session, the only changes that we're going to review and we discussed were to stop the new sidewalk that we're going to build along the front of the building, up to the edge of the building, and then create, there'll be a crosswalk that can steer pedestrians to go across the street to the other existing sidewalk. I like that idea that we discussed because it'll keep people walking away from the actual parking area and will guide them to an already existing sidewalk. As we know, there's a, you know, that street is used frequently by walking, and I think, you know, having that crosswalk there will be beneficial than having it go all the way up through our parking lot. The other addition is there is a piece of, there's a small village right-of-way area to the right of the parking lot that it's currently just dirt and mud, and I was thinking as a part of our improvements, we're going to plant about a three-inch caliper tree in that spot and do some ground cover plantings there just to make it look nicer. If you're familiar with the site, you could easily just drive by and take a look at it, but I think it'll benefit the whole area from it, and we'll absorb that into our project. And everything else is what we discussed last time about installing the garage door, you know, in the front of the building. So if you guys have any questions about the current plan?
I have none.
No.
None.
I don't really, I understand that we talked about it, but just on the parking spaces, there is enough space for turnaround and backing in and backing out, correct?
Yeah. As for the village code, we actually had a survey done of the existing parking spaces on the property, and we did that since the last meeting, and all of them are approximately nine feet wide by, actually about 17 feet, which is, I think, the code is 16 feet in the village, so it's more than adequate for the parking spaces.
And that vehicles pulling in and pulling out will not be doing so at increased risk on that hill coming down?
No. It'll be just like it was before, and it has never been an issue from my understanding, and shouldn't be now.
Okay. Thank you. I have no questions.
No questions.
Nothing?
None.
Public hearing's still open, so you may want to just continue that to see if anyone from the public wants to speak. You had opened the last meeting, and so it's still open.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make comment? Given the fact that we don't have anyone from the public here to make comment, this public hearing, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second? We got your second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor? Okay.
Okay.
All righty.
So.
All in favor?
All right.
Did you, okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to read the description of the project. Applicant is seeking to construct.
Speak into the microphone, make sure they hear.
Do you hear me? Okay. Applicant is seeking to construct a new garage door and new office at the premises located 11 Jackson Avenue, Tocco. Seeker resolution. Pursuant to the regulations of SECA, this board finds that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of SECA and its implementing regulations. Two, the board is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed site plan application. And number three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action. Okay? The following is a resolution decision of the Planning Board of the Village of Tocco. Applicant is seeking to construct a new garage door and a new office at the premises located 11 Jackson Avenue. The applicant is not seeking to expand the building in any way, but is seeking to reconfigure the interior of the existing building. The applicant will also be making substantial improvements to the exterior of the building, which will enhance the look of the building. Further, applicant is seeking to make substantial improvements in the village right away. We find based on the work session and presentation at the public hearing that the applicant has met its burden as to the seven-to-one of the Village of Tocco zoning code, and therefore the applicant is approved. As a condition of this approval, the applicant must secure approval from the Tocco Village Board for its improvements proposed by the applicant that encroach on the village property. Said improvements include, but are not limited to, the installation of new sidewalks, landscaping, and pedestrian crossing markings that will connect the sidewalks to the north side of Jackson Avenue with the south side of Jackson Avenue. Further, this approval is conditioned upon the applicant securing a license agreement with the village for ingress and egress over the village property to access the applicant's parking area. The board strongly recommends to the village board that the village board approve the proposed improvements along with the license agreement. Okay. Every representation of the applicant made in his application and presentation will be a condition of this approval. Any deviation from the representations made shall cause for the revocation of said approval.
Okay. Do we have, we have that motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Will you take the?
Commissioner Narenberg.
Four.
Commissioner Barra.
Four.
Commissioner Caliano.
Four.
Chairwoman Caramella.
Four. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck to you.
Appreciate it.
Best of luck, Dennis.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah. Our next, our next applicant is from 187 White Plains Road, site plan to construct a new athletic field. Will you come forward, please? God bless you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Joyce Kennedy, and I'm the Senior Director of Community Relations at Concordia College, and we do have some updates as a result of the last planning meeting and also some feedback, or much feedback, we received from the local residents. So to start with, just to kind of give you the background, we met with Steve Eklund at his request on March 1st, and that was with President John Nunes and myself, and he brought in, there was the mayor, it was trustee Antonio Leo, as well as Dave Burke, who's the village administrator, and we talked about the public's opposition, of course, to the lighting, and after much discussion and consideration, President Nunes contacted Steve over the weekend and told him that Concordia had decided to take the lights, you know, out of the equation for the updates to the field. So the lights that we've been, have obviously been much discussed over the last few months are now off the table. So the plan we would like to proceed with will not include any kind of lighting to the plant, to the field, other than what might be needed, for example, around, you know, the concession and comfort station for, just for safety for people there. In addition, on March 14th, we had been contacted by Colleen Staunton and as to have a meeting with some of the local residents, so we had, so again, President Nunes and I met with Colleen Staunton, Ed and Erica Conway, as well as Steve Holitz, and although the decision had been made with regard to the lights, we just wanted the opportunity to hear them firsthand what they had to say about the project, again, mostly mainly about the lights, and some other smaller issues, and just to kind of, again, the, you know, our community relations and our, you know, community image is very important to the college. We've been around for a long time, and we felt that we didn't really want to negate 100 years of goodwill in the community for nine hours of lighting. So we wanted to convey that message to them directly because, you know, many of them were very much involved in the grassroots campaign to get us to take the lights off the, you know, not have lights on the field. So we wanted to make sure that we had that conversation directly with them. So it was a good exchange. We did agree to keep the lines of communication open, and one of the things we talked about was to put a link on the Concordia College website that would allow them to see, allow us to put updates on there for them to see more, you know, timely information on the plan as it moves forward. And we're currently working on that, in fact, have a meeting with our marketing department on Thursday to finalize the content and the visuals for that link. In addition to this, on March 7th, Jim Cotello of the Clark Company sent the stormwater containment and drainage plans to the building department, and those have been sent out to an outside reviewer, as you know, that was a part of the provisions for the plan. So those are currently still being reviewed, and we've not received a report back as of today. We contacted the building department and nothing, we have not heard anything with regard to that review, so I guess that will still, that's still up in the air. One of the things that did come up continually during the public hearing that we did want to address was the issue of parking and what we would do for parking during the events, and this also was raised, was an issue that was raised by BFP Planning in their review of the, of our plan as well. So in taking a look at, he's going to put a slide up just to show, okay. Okay, so this is actually a picture of the field here. You can see it's up at the top, the baseball diamond is there below it, and then to the right, the white is the Meyer Athletic Center, or we so lovingly refer to as the MAC, and then below that is the parking lot for the MAC as well as for Stein Hall. So just to give you some perspective, there are approximately, or actually total, of 162 spaces on that side of the campus where the field is located, and there are 107 at the Meyer Athletic Center. There are 32 spaces in a small lot next to Stein Hall, and then there are 23 spaces along Rose Avenue. So again, that brings us up to 162 spaces on that side of the field, on that side of the campus. Across the street on Concordia Place, there will be approximately 85 spaces. There are 55 spaces there now, and we have a proposal before Bronxville Village to increase that by 33, so there will be 85 additional spaces on that side of the campus. That doesn't include what's available in the Somer Center lot, which is 60-plus spaces, as well as some other parking in front of a couple of the dorms over there. But again, the closest lot to the field would be the Concordia Place spaces, and that will be an additional 85 spaces. One of the things that we have continually mentioned, and we want to reiterate that again this evening, is that when we have home games or events on that field, we will have security and parking attendants in place who will help with directing parking, as well as who will, you know, help with traffic flow. So that's something that is, you know, very important to us, and we do that for regular events, when we have a recital, or a concert, or a books and coffee, whatever it might be, at the Somer Center. When we have a big crowd on campus, we always have security and parking attendants there to direct people around. So again, that's something we would continue, and when, also the other thing that we are doing is we are building into, or writing into the contracts for visiting teams that the buses must park in the MAC lot. There have been many occasions in the past where the buses have just parked on Rose Avenue. They're big, you know, they're either big coach buses or big school buses, and it does make it difficult for traffic and people to move in and around the field. Those buses will now be required to park in the MAC lot away from the field and out of the way of any kind of traffic. And again, with this field, there will really, there will only be one sporting event at a time. We don't have a huge athletic staff. In fact, our athletic director is here, she's, and we have an assistant athletic director and, you know, very small staff, so they cannot be in two places at one time. So there will only be one event at a time going on at the field, so we wouldn't have to worry about soccer, and then baseball, or anything else going on simultaneously, or basketball, that might take up spaces in the MAC Athletic Center. And somebody did mention along the way, one, I think there was a comment from a couple people in the, in the public, that they talked about the conservatory. So the conservatory is a big part of our campus. It's a music conservatory, and students come there generally after school and on the weekends for music instruction. Just to put this in perspective, there are only 13 studios in the Stein Hall Conservatory, so therefore there can never be any more than 13 students plus 13 instructors for a total of 26 people at full capacity in that facility. Most of the students are under the driving age. Their parents come, drop them off, and leave. Many of them go do an errand or whatever they might do, and then come back and pick them up. So they're not parking there permanently or for any great length of time. There is a studio class, a music academy that's held on Saturday afternoons. It is three hours. Again, the students, there are 14 of them there, but they're all students under the driving age, so again, the parents come in, drop them off, and come back later and pick them up. So the conservatory lot and that area around the MAC where parents would come in and out or would be there for students who were taking music lessons would never be compromised or be filled up or at capacity because students are coming in and out of the conservatory for their music lessons. So those are just some of the things that came up at the last meeting. Again, we will put together, we will take the visual that we showed you before that shows the parking spaces and give that to Noah Levine, as well as to Bill Williams, and we'll put together a memorandum that just summarizes what I just told you about the parking situation. And I think that, and there was one other comment on that review about a bike rack, possibly having to put in a bike rack, and there is currently a bike rack in front of the tennis center right there on Rose Avenue, so we feel that that would address that issue. And then, of course, the other item under their comment section was about the lighting, which has now been removed from the plan. So do you have any other questions, or you want to?
There was, there's some concern about pedestrian access through the field. Will that be made more supposedly, let's say, user-friendly, so to speak?
Well, they can't cut across a baseball field. Obviously, we don't want to do that. They, what they will do is go through the MAC. You know, it does take time to walk from one end of the building to the other, but that's, they've been doing that for years, and that's, that's pretty much the way that we've always done that, so that we would continue that, and again, we would have people on duty to direct pedestrian traffic through the MAC and then across Rose Avenue and over to the field. And again, we also have students who go to these games. It's not, it's not, we don't have hundreds of people driving to, you know, to campus to go to a soccer game. We'd be very excited if that happened, but that doesn't generally happen. So many times it's students who are coming from the dorms across the street to come over. They're not driving, they're walking to go to the field and watch a, you know, watch their friends play in a soccer game, so.
Just to add that the current gate.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Just to add that the current gate at the corner of Rose Avenue and Route 22, that is currently locked and unused because the staircase down to the field is a code violation, to say the least, is, will be opened and that staircase would be rehabilitated, so that would add some pedestrian flow along an existing crosswalk across Route 22. So to answer your question, it would be more pedestrian-friendly.
And you will have, you will have folks at strategic points to make sure that the flow is going the way it should?
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll have signage. I mean, we have these sort of like portable sandwich boards that we use for other events, like when we have an admissions open house, or homecoming or anything like that, or when we have a big, you know, community event on campus, so we can certainly use those as well to direct traffic at points where we might not be able to put a traffic attendant or a security guard. So absolutely.
I have a question. You referred to an application with the Village of Bronxville for parking. I'm assuming that means you're applying to their planning board or zoning board for that portion of the parcel that's in fact located in the Village of Bronxville?
That's correct.
Okay. And I was going to ask the question that our chair did about the flow of, the attendance having traffic flow. My thought was, how many attendants do you typically use now, and how many do you expect to use for the rehabilitated field?
I think it really depends on the size of the event. I think usually we have two, at least two. We have had instances where, for example, we recently hosted an event for the Bronxville Public Library. There were over 300, really 350 people, so we had three attendants that night. We needed them. Now, they were coming in and out of Somer Center into that back area, but we did have extra guards on duty that night. So again, if it's, we would never have that capacity or that volume for any type of game.
Okay. My thought was going toward some kind of proportion or ratio for an average number of attendees that you seem to find to be typical, and maybe plug in a certain number of attendants that relates to that number of attendees. Mr. Gerson, you have any thoughts on that?
The only thought would be, I don't know if they're going to be able to predict how many people are going to show up at a game, so that might be problematic for them. But if they know a large crowd is going to come because it's a big game, maybe they can account for that and put more attendants on duty.
Yeah, I realize, my thought was if you hit a certain number for whatever event we're talking about, that we write in, if we're going to write in directions for buses to go to parking at the MAC Center, can we write in, you know, a baseline number, at this number, if you hit this number, you've got to have an extra one or two attendants directing parking or signage?
Well, I mean.
And I realize that includes predicting, and perhaps you don't know, but if you're selling tickets, you would have some idea.
We don't sell tickets. We don't sell tickets to the events.
To any of the events?
Well, we sell tickets to concerts that are held by the conservatory, but that has nothing to do with this proposal.
Okay.
We don't sell tickets to sporting events.
Okay. I guess my hesitancy or my reluctance is, hinges on the fact that you must have averages of attendance over the years.
Yes. Hold on.
I mean, either they're going to warrant an additional attendant, or they're not going to warrant. I don't know, but you must have averages.
We don't get a big turnout for men's and women's soccer, but I do have additional staff on hand, student athletes from other teams who work. We have about 10 or 15 student workers, so if an occasion called where more people showed up than we expected, I have students at our disposal that I could put at different locations to help with that situation.
Okay.
But again, it's more, it's really more or less on a, you know, case-by-case basis. We just don't, you just don't know from one game to the next if, you know, how many people are going to show up. And like I said, right now, the attendance is not super high, so.
All right. On the issue of the lighting that has now been dispensed with, how does that affect, obviously that affects your determination to not have night games. So where does that whole concept go? It just disappeared? I mean, you've just conceded that you're not going to have night games? Is that accurate, or?
Well, yeah, I mean, we basically do what we do now, which is we have them during the daylight hours.
Okay. And that fits with your schedule?
Yes. I mean, yeah.
The reason I'm asking is that suddenly it just disappeared, and allow me to be a little skeptical. Where do, where do all these great games that we were going to have suddenly go to, and they're not, they're not going to? Either they weren't going to be that many to begin with, or you can see that you don't need to have them, and so I'm a little skeptical.
Well, part of the reason for the lights, really, I mean, which we did discuss several times over the last few months, was for practice.
Right.
It would enable us to extend practice time. So it wasn't so much, yes, it would be great to have night games if we had the lights, but the real issue was practice. And, you know, we're having to hold practices super early in the morning. We need, NCAA requires that you have rest periods between games and next practice. So again, the ability to have those lights at night and extend practice, and you can't have more than one team at a time on the field, but you have a men's and women's soccer team, so that's two teams. So again, it, it just would allow us to have more practice time beyond, you know, the, into the evening, particularly in the fall, when it gets dark earlier. So that was really, and again, I think, I apologize if we didn't communicate that, but that was really what was the driving force behind the lights.
No, it's, it's not that you didn't communicate. I was just trying to make all of the pieces, you know, fit in my head because I, I need to understand it for myself. So you're conceding you're not going to have either practice at night or games at night?
Well, we can't, we don't, I mean, at this point, we don't have any lights.
You're not going to have it. Because I noticed in the letter that was sent to the village, there seemed to be some condition in some, that for the time being, or some indefinite term or period, that the lighting issue has been put to rest. And being where I sit in the world as a professional, that, that phrase triggers concern on my part, so I'm hoping that, maybe that was just somebody else's phrasing, and that it's for all intents and purposes, the, the timing of this application, and that you expect that to be a final determination, not indefinite term or period. Maybe you didn't see the letter that was sent to the village.
I actually just saw the letter about less than an hour before I came here.
Okay. Well, that was, that was phrasing that, like I said, caught my eye. It seemed to suggest that there is an opening for adding lights at some point in the future, and, you know, maybe we all won't be here at some point in the future, but that's what it said, and it, it, again, causes me some concern. So maybe you can't speak to that, but that's what's, what we've been told.
Okay. Well, again, I just saw that letter, you know, about an hour ago, and I don't really, I'm not, I'm not sure what, how to really address that.
I understand that.
So, I mean, there was definitely concern about the lights, and, you know, it, again, as I mentioned to you before, it just wasn't worth 100 years of goodwill for nine hours of lights.
All right.
So, and this, and what's really important here for us as a, as an institution is to update, and we're not constructing a new field, I just want to make sure that that's clarified for the record, because people continually refer to it as a new field. It's not a new field, it's an update and refurbishment of an existing field, again, a field that's been there for over a hun, for almost 100 years. So what we are trying to do is, I mean, what's more important to us is to have a field that our players can be proud of, can be safe on, and can play on, without us having to go out and rent space from other places, or try to, you know, piece things together or have practices that, you know, you know, butt against each other, you know, we'd really would like to have, and it also helps with our recruiting. So we really want to have a field that everyone, not only us, but the surrounding neighbors, can be proud of, because right now it is not a very sightly or effective use of that space. So that's what we're trying to accomplish, and again, that was more important to us than the lighting.
I understand. I've, I've driven there a couple of times, so.
Very good.
I understand the efforts here. Thank you.
I appreciate that. We appreciate that, so. Were there any other questions, or?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
The public hearing's open, so I don't know if you want to continue that now?
May as well.
May as well, yeah.
Yeah.
We're opening, let's make a resolution to open the public hearing, reopen the public hearing.
All right, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone in favor?
Yeah.
Oh, everyone is in favor, fine. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment? Give us your name, please.
Ed Conway. My wife and I own Ed Winslow Circle, so it's right behind the.
Is this your first time? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. No?
I've been here before.
But do we have anyone else who is going to make comment?
I think the lighting is a big issue, so that's why.
Proceed.
It's a sparsely. ...sparsely attended tonight.
Okay.
But first, I'd like to thank Concordia, Dr. Nunes, Joyce Kennedy, for withdrawing the, the proposed 60-foot stadium lights. We really appreciate that. They listened to the community. Over 230 neighbors and residents signed a petition that are against that. They listened to, you know, us, who are strongly opposed to that, and it should not be in a residential neighborhood, and we asked that the planning board, as also the trustees, take this issue and ban these lights from the community. There is this strong support, and we think we've evidenced that through the petition, and we'll follow up with that with you and with the trustees also. We'd like to thank the mayor and trustee Leo for their efforts in supporting the residents and meeting with Concordia. We do appreciate it. Joyce has been also on her side, very tremendous in helping us and facilitate this. We want Concordia to thrive. We want them to succeed, and we want to support them. But the lights were a, a very difficult issue for us, quality of life, property values, and as you saw from the petition, so many people, and even more than that, are against that. I do have some concerns that I want to briefly state from a number of our neighbors. Drainage, we understand that extensive testing has been done, and proper drainage and storage will be put in place. We expect that if problems do arise, they will be remediated quickly, as currently, we really have no problems, at least on Winslow Circle. Second, the press box, we understand there's a proposal there. We strongly recommend keeping the press box in its current location on the Rose Avenue side. We're less concerned with the 45 minutes or so of music for the 18 home games than having that type of a structure right behind the houses. So where it is currently on Rose Avenue, we strongly recommend keeping it there. In terms of the size of the fieldhouse, we understand that it is 1,600 feet. It might fit in there, but the concern is a little bit of, does that really, is it too big? Is it the right size? Is eight bathrooms totally necessary? Could six be accommodating for that type of a crowd? Since it's not going to be public, it's just going to be for temporary use of those teammates. Finally, the safety, we're all concerned about the proper access to the field should be considered. I think we're most consider, most concerned about the access to Route 22 for the students and the children going across that, because it is dangerous, and you're going to have more going back and forth, especially if the field is going to be rented out. So probably Rose is probably the best way to do that, but leave it to the professionals to determine that. But finally, I'd like to thank the planning board and everybody involved for your time and efforts, and Joyce and Concordia for withdrawing the lights, and we expect this to be permanent also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just interject something? I'll ask a question. Are you consulting the police when you make your plan for that, that going back and forth across White Plains Road? Are you consulting them, with them?
Traffic light, traffic light.
The crosswalk across Route 22 at Rose Avenue is, is currently existing.
I know that, but I mean, you know, students are not, that's not their primary role, so they have to really be trained to make sure that there's, you know, adequate...
Madam Chair, what we can do is, we can forward this application to Chief Costanzo and have his comments on it by next meeting.
You know, towards, to that point, is there any reason to think we might install some kind of new traffic signalization mechanism?
Well, I talked to the chief before, and Route 22 is the state road, so the state's in control of what they do up there. We don't have much say, we can petition them, but again, it's up to the state.
What about adding event signage that really very clearly refers to where the cross, where people should be directed crosswalk-wise? I mean, I realize you're going to have attendance, or...
It's already there.
Yeah, I know. I also know how many cars drive down Route 22, and I'm one of them, and sometimes I don't care how fast I'm driving, and I'm fairly law-abiding. So I'm just wondering if there's some extra, extra, extra that we can think of to put in place for that area?
Well, again, 22, it is, you know, as Gary's pointed out, and we've mentioned in the past, that it is a state road, so it's, it's not an easy...
But you could put signage on, I'm just thinking, a really big, I mean, I don't know how big your, your sidewalk signs are, but you say you put them up, side, sandwich board signs, but maybe...
Well, those would only be, I mean, if we did, those would be put out for events. We wouldn't leave them up there permanently.
Right.
We couldn't do that.
All right, I'm, I'm just, I'm actually...
I mean, obviously, for us, the safety of anyone on our, or around our campus is extremely important, so...
Right, yeah, I'm just brainstorming, is what I'm doing.
Yeah, we're doing the best that we can to try to make sure that everyone gets across the street safely and gets to the field safely, and, you know, but that's obviously a concern of ours as well. But there's not, you know, there's not much we can do on Route 22, because it is a state road, and that, all that would have to be, would be handled with the state.
That's why I went for signage, sandwich boards. That would be something you could put on your property, which, you know, just shy of that state road boundary line.
Like, but temporarily, you could...
Right, right, right. That's why I say sandwich boards, because you fold them up, take them away when the event's over. That's all I'm thinking. Like I said, I'm brainstorming here, but... One less traffic accident is a good thing. One less pedestrian accident is a good...
Well, also, yeah.
One extra sign, or two extra signs, might keep a lawsuit from arising.
And people going the speed limit would help, too.
I, yes, unfortunately, that's out of our control, that's...
Oh, that's out of our control, too.
Yeah, so, all right, thank you.
I mean, I'm just concerned about students being trained properly, supervised properly, and, and by the people who really understand, I mean, what the situation is in that area. So that's what, I think, we're, I mean, we all are on the same page. Our goal is safety.
And we already have a crosswalk there. I mean, the students are very accustomed to going from one side of campus to the other, because, you know, we have, again, you know, we have the Meyer Athletic Center, and we have the campus, you know, the, the classroom and dormitory facilities, you know, they're across the street from each other. So students cross over 22 all the time, and so it's, it's a normal course of their days. So I don't, so I think that in terms of training, I think they're very well aware of the dangers and the risks of not paying attention going across Route 22.
Okay, at the risk of beating a dead horse, you don't have statistics on any accidents or, I'm assuming there's very little, and hopefully that's...
So our contractor facility says he's been there for 20 years, and there have been two.
All right, that's a good track record. You just, you know, would like to have as few as possible.
And if people slow down on 22?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Madam Chair, may I make a suggestion that you keep the public hearing open, because there are still some outstanding issues with the drainage. The drainage plan has been forwarded to our consultant, Dolph Rodfeld, and we are waiting for his report to come back on the drainage. He may come back with comments or may say it's fine, or, so we'll see, we just don't know, so. And public, once we get that report, public may want to comment on it.
To the point of public comment, we, we got an email letter, I guess we should call it a letter today, from Bill Carney. Do you want to enter this into the record?
You could put it in the record, sure. We'll put it in the file.
Yeah, I mean, it's his effort of commenting.
And it'll be in the file if anyone wants to look at it, yeah, that's fine.
All righty. So that was it for me. Thank you.
So I think you may need to make a motion to continue the public hearing till next meeting, and...
Yeah. Who would like to make that motion?
Who would continue the public hearing?
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Well, I guess not. You said no one else had decided they wanted to speak this evening? So?
Make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
See you next month.
Okay.
Yeah, Ray, why don't you make the motion to adjourn tonight?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, you too.